Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regular meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is March 13th, 2019. It's 8:40 PM. I apologize that we're starting late, and I thank you for waiting. We had a caucus meeting that went too long, so we're here now, and I call the meeting to order. And we'll do the roll.
Sure, it is 8:40. Mayor Kranjak?
Here.
Councilperson Woo?
Here.
Sung?
Here.
Sabari?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Aversa?
Here.
Oh? Here. Borough Attorney?
Here.
Superintendent DPW?
Here.
Borough Engineers?
Here.
And Municipal Clerk? Everyone's present, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's start this meeting as we start all our meetings with the flag salute. You remain standing after, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in the world, free and just.
I'd like to observe a moment of silence for a former Englewood Cliffs Police Department Chief, John Murphy. He was also an Englewood Cliffs Council member. Our condolences go to his family. And also, a moment of silence for Helen Damato, who's a resident, who passed away today, I believe. And we send our condolences to her family as well. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available from the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. Just calling your attention to the food drop-off box in the lobby. This is our community service project. We've been doing it for over a year. We're collecting food for the Office of Concerned Food Pantry at St. San Diego's Church in Englewood. It's a very important charity to support. There's a lot of people in Bergen County who are working poor. So I thank everyone who's brought anything here today. The bin will be there until tomorrow, so if you forgot it tonight, just bring it tomorrow. Thank you. And also, just want to mention that I always say the best day of the year for being mayor is the day that I get to go meet Dr. Seuss at the North Cliff School. I did that last week. Green Eggs and Ham is a favorite, so I don't mind doing it every year. Actually, we could spend the whole day doing a lot of stories. So it was a wonderful experience. The kids loved it, and they got me a Dr. Seuss hat to wear. Okay. Yes, so there's also something I noticed when I was at the North Cliff School. They are collecting money donations for the Marine Corps, and I asked them to provide us with a bottle that they're collecting the money in. Mark, did you have that?
He's going to bring it back and put it on the table.
Yeah, just if you could put it out. Lobby's fine. I think it's fine. So if you happen to have any spare change and you walk by, please support our Marine Corps. Thank you. Also, want to thank Mike Neglia and Dan Lee from our new borough engineering firm. They're here tonight to introduce themselves, and I thank them for coming, and I apologize that we ran late. So what I want to do is let you go first, speak now, and then you're free to leave.
I just want to, again, thank the mayor and council for our appointment as municipal engineer. For some of you, I know you put in RRQs, and I'm sure you reviewed them all. Our firm has been around since 1948, handles many municipalities in and around Bergen County. We have two offices, one in Harris, New Jersey, and one in Clark, New Jersey, in the county. I've grown up even around this area. I've grown up most of my life in Norwood, New Jersey, which is a little further to the north here. Daniel Lee will be the representative for Neglia Engineering account, and we did have a chance to meet last Thursday with several of the department heads and Mark, and actually had a chance to tour some of the streets in town and some of the issues, and we're trying to get ourselves up to speed on all of it. And we look forward to working with each and every one of you. If anybody has a question of us, I'd be happy to answer it for you.
And I echo the sentiments of Mike. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you for the appointment. As Mike had mentioned, we did take a look at a couple of sites in town already, and as we gear up and want to take a look at all the documents that are in place currently, we look forward to kind of getting started on the project. So thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight. And Mark, I appreciate you being here. I know it's been a long day for you, so if you want to give us a report or an update, and then, of course, you're free to leave as well, so.
It was well public work. We got a little bit of snow there at the end of the winter, so it was good, but all in no accidents or injuries. March 15th, we begin vegetation pickup in the north, and 6th in the south, and we continue at the summer, as we normally do. I'd like to welcome Mike, Daniel, and move forward with our plans, as well as board paving in Englewood.
Okay.
And also, Mayor, council members, I'd like to thank Mark Neville for his assistance in preparing these specs to repair the field at Woody Field. So within the week, hopefully, if it doesn't snow, a company's going to come in, actually a golf company that does all sports fields, and they're going to grade, reseed, and they're going to fix softball field, the Little League field, the skin field, which is the backfield, the dirt field, and the entire soccer field. The soccer field will start after the fall season, the soccer fall season. And also, the DPW will be repairing some of the puddling around the park to enable the residents that walk so they don't have to jump over any puddles. So that's going to start this week as well.
Thank you for doing that, Mark. Appreciate it, and thank your department as well. So unless you have something else to add?
No, we didn't. Now, again, if the mayor and council level wants us to come to any meetings, please refer to all. We gave all of our numbers to Lizette, and we're reaching her 24/7 if she has.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Yeah, so Officer, at the end of the evening, would you just take that bottle and put it -- because Mark's leaving, just put it in the police department?
Oh, we're good.
Yeah, and Officer Crapless will take it. Thanks.
Let me show everybody the bottle when he comes in, so everybody can see.
Mark, do you want to show everybody what the bottle looks like?
Mike, Mark, when you come back with the bottle, can you just bring it in so we could show it to everyone, and then we'll put it out?
All right.
Thank you.
The kids were thrilled that we were going to try to help them raise more money. So the next thing up on the agenda is correspondence. Would the clerk please read those into the record?
Sure, absolutely. Correspondence from Mayor Mark Sokolich from Fort Lee, Carol McMorra, resident, Englewood Cliffs Board of Education, Lieutenant McDermott, Englewood Cliffs Police Department, and Lauren Eastwood, resident.
Okay. We have minutes to approve, and I think we just need to do them.
Can I vote, Mayor?
Yeah, sure.
Can I ask what the correspondence from Mayor Sokolich was about, and where did you get a copy of that?
It was a thank you letter for the fire department's support in the recent fire, I believe it was in the Lindwood section of Fort Lee.
I could share it with that.
Do you want to share it? Okay. The clerk has it.
I'll pull out a copy.
Anything? Okay. Let's turn our attention to the minutes. We have to approve certain 2019 and certain 2018 minutes. I'm wondering what the fastest way to do this would be, if we just lump together the 19s?
Yes, because, well, two of the council members can't vote on the 18.
Right. So why don't you read those then? Thank you.
So you want me to do the dates first?
As you wish.
Okay. February 14, 2018, February 14, closed session, March 14, closed session, April 6, closed session, May 29, closed session, August 21, closed session, October 23, closed session. Can I have a motion?
No.
Who seconded it?
I did. Donnie Hall.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Sung?
Epstein.
Sabari?
Epstein.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. These are 2019. January 24th, special, February 11, special, February 27, special, and that's it. Need a motion?
Point of order. I just want to make a quick comment on the minutes. Lizette, I just want to ask, going forward, is there a set time schedule we can have for the minutes? I know last year it got backlogged quite a bit. This year, can you give a timeframe as to when the previous meetings were recorded?
Absolutely. I'm trying to check them as fast as I can. We've been having an exorbitant amount of minutes.
It would be helpful. It's just hard to go back a year in time and review them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, did I -- I need a motion?
No motion.
Who was it?
Not it.
You moved it? And Sung seconded it? Okay. Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
My favor.
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand. Let me recognize you, and then just come up here at the desk and state your name and address. Yes, in the back. You, Mike, yes.
Mike Kochanover, 11 Fifth Street.
Can you just sit and speak to the microphone?
Thanks. That's all right.
Yeah, whatever you're more comfortable doing.
Mike Kochanover, 11 Fifth Street. I think it was a year ago, or close there to, the council voted on an engineering study for $140,000 to take a look at what it would cost to rehabilitate Fifth Street, where I live, with two other residents and a few other owners. It was passed, and nothing's happened in a year. Myself and a few of the other people who were involved have asked numerous times over the past year what's going on. We haven't yet to get an answer. I just met our new engineering firm. $140,000 seemed to hide me at the time, and my own personal take, based on their facial reaction, seems to hide them as well. I'm just hoping to find out what is actually going on, because the residents had agreed at that time that we were probably going to be assessing the amounts. It sounded like an inordinate amount of money to do it, but that's why we were hoping this engineering study would actually shed some light. Nothing's happened. I've heard different things. I've heard there's a litigation here, litigation there. None of that is relevant to Fifth Street. In reality, I'm not really sure why there was an approved engineering survey that has not yet taken place, and I'm hoping some light can be shed from us. And before that happens, we were also told at that meeting that our neighboring town, Fort Lee, was more than happy to allow us to stretch our sewer line from Fifth Street to Englewood Cliffs on a straight line right down, which is the equivalent of about three city blocks into Fort Lee, and our current engineering firm at the time said that that would significantly decrease the cost that we were looking at. I believe that the council person is here again tonight, and I'm hoping to hear from him, hoping for some sort of an update and some sort of rationale as to why we're not just moving forward with this engineering study.
Like I said, the new borough engineers are going to be addressing this issue, but the borough administrator also could add more to that.
Good evening, Mr. Kochanover. At the last meeting, I provided the governing body with an update to Fifth Street. Mazur Engineering did start the project of reviewing and studying Fifth Street, and he ran into a situation that the town needed an easement, and the developer that was going to put additional homes there would not agree to the easement, and everything was stopped. Then we just started looking at other things as to how we could remedy all this quickly, and basically, we ran out of time. We went out for RRQs. We have a new engineer, Neglia Engineering, which I met with last week, and one of the things that I did ask him to go with the mayor's approval was to take a tour of Fifth Street with the DPW superintendent. I did ask him to contact Mazur Engineering so the same work wouldn't be duplicated at a cost to the residents, and I'm hoping that within the month, Neglia can provide some additional information to us. But please know that the prior engineer did start researching the work, and like I said, the developer did not want to help us with the easement, so everything stopped.
And so I appreciate that, Lizette. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Two quick things. One, I guess my question is, if that's not even the path of least resistance, why even consider that as an option? The easiest way, and I'm not an engineer, but I'm a rational person, would be to make a straight line into Fort Lee. That being said, it's not a developer, it's actually the person who owns, it's a resident, 25th Street. She's here. I've met with her. She by no means objected to granting the easement for the purposes of paving Fifth Street. So just make sure the councilman has all the facts and reasons to speak for herself, that that was false information. So again, I appreciate the update. I'm hoping you guys can actually make something happen, because I've lived here for five and a half years now. I pay my taxes on time. There's two other residents, like I said, tax payers on the street. Hopefully, you guys can make something happen. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
What I'd like to say, Mary, I am a councilman in the borough of Fort Lee, 309 Main Street. And I was here last year at the time where this presentation was made. Mazur did reach out and at one time spoke to our in-house engineer in Fort Lee, and I checked again this week to see if there was any further update on that, and he said that he had no further contact except one telephone call where they kind of shared an email. At our last week's work session, knowing that this was going to be discussed, I reaffirmed, with the mayor and council, that they have an ability to offer a shared service type agreement for the hookup of that sewer line into Fort Lee, the same type of arrangements that we have with both Ferside Park and Palisades Park. So just as good neighbors, I mean, there's a cost associated with that, but the cost would be far less than through one key wall, a hookup in 2 or 6th Street.
Well, thank you so much for offering that. We appreciate it. We also got a little bit delayed and sidetracked last year because of our affordable housing litigation, because Fifth Street was factoring into that as well. So I'm hoping that this year we'll be able to rectify the situation. For members of the public who aren't aware about the situation on Fifth Street, the developer built new homes on Fifth Street before I became mayor and didn't pave the street, or apparently did proper connections for sewers and storm drains and other things. So we appreciate it, and thanks for being such great neighbors, and.
And I just came from the Fort Lee Free Public Library trustees meeting, of which residents of Englewood Cliffs have had the benefit of it for the last few years, and we welcome an extension of that agreement. You have almost over 500 people, residents of Englewood Cliffs, that take advantage of the program that the Fort Lee Library has. We'll be celebrating our 100th anniversary this year, and all residents of Englewood Cliffs are more than welcome to attend. They call an evening in stacks on June 1st of this year, after kickoff for the second hundred years. So I think Fort Lee has provided better service at less money than they did paying in the past, and we would hope to be able to extend that in future. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, I'm back. Yes. Mark, do you want to just come in and leave the bottle here? Maybe that's better.
Hello, I'm.
I'm sorry. One second. Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, I want you to sit here. Okay. Thanks so much, Mark. Have a good evening. I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Lion Kim, living on 25th Street, and I'm speaking here as the president of the Fifth Street and also the developer that was aforementioned when you might round it up, and I just wanted to correct some of the misalignment of information. So as the developer of the Fifth Street, who owns a lot, who owns a lot both on the Fifth Street and Sixth Street, we never objected to the idea of providing the easement, and we are willing to provide the easement if that's the only option. But we did decide not to go forward with the construction of the two houses, and that was the only thing that we didn't pursue. But other than that, we're still willing to talk and negotiate the easement for sure, because I am, I mean, it's helpful for me to have the road paved, because I live on the Fifth Street and the mailbox is on the Sixth Street, and I have to get the call all the time for the packages and stuff. So I'm definitely willing to talk and move this forward, and I just wanted to clarify that we never objected to the idea of providing the easement for paving the road on the Fifth Street.
Thank you. Mayor, we have our engineer reach out to you?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. We'll do that. Thank you for being here, then.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
This question would be directed to either the borough clerk or the borough attorney. On February 12th, I submitted an OPA request regarding email communications between OIC Hill and Mayor Kranjak regarding specific issues. Seven business days later, I received a prompt response from the borough clerk indicating she turned over responsive records from OIC Hill. I did not get a responsive response or responsive response from Mayor Kranjak's. The interesting thing I find on this is that the emails were between both gentlemen. So in some of the emails that were turned over by OIC Hill, it clearly had Mayor Kranjak participating in them. However, the responses Mayor responded to was with nothing. So my question is, in order to avoid litigation, because clearly there were responsive records there, is that, is there something that can be done regarding this? And let's just say it's an omission at this point, unless there is, you know, a pattern of this type behavior happening.
Well, there's definitely something that could be done.
I'm asking the borough attorney.
You asked both. Let me tell you, if you could just form a proper question in a sentence, then I'll answer it.
The question is, Mario, why are you not turning over emails when I have emails that Officer in Charge Hill?
No, no, not tonight. In your actual request. Your actual request is deficient. So go back and read it, rewrite it, and we'll answer.
I beg to differ, because Officer in Charge Hill provided responsive requests. Now, unless he is wrong, or the borough clerk is wrong, but I tend to think that you may be wrong. That's why I'm asking a competent legal opinion from the borough attorney.
I'm reading your question as it was written, and I ask it.
I'd like a response from the borough attorney.
Oh, sure.
I haven't seen it, but I'm happy to look into it and see what it is.
I will give my information to Lizette, and she will forward it to you.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
But you're sitting here saying that you have responses from Officer Hill.
I have responses from Officer Hill, but you declined.
But you want more.
Either intentionally or accidentally. I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, Mario, that you're not trying to hide information.
Andrew.
I'll give you that benefit of the doubt, Mario.
Andrew.
I just want the information.
Andrew.
Yes, Mario.
Andrew.
Yes, Mario.
Go back and read your question in the OPA request.
Clearly, it was good enough that I got a response from OIC Hill, so I don't.
That's his prerogative. I'm not Officer Hill.
Well, maybe I think you should study your OPA law better, Mario.
Maybe you should write sentences better. Okay, that was fun. Anybody else? Yes.
I know that Captain Regan retired effective February 1st, 2019. I'd like to know what happened to the Internal Affairs investigation against Captain Regan, Captain Murphy, and Lieutenant Hankelmann. Councilman Aversa, you're the police chairman. Was Captain Regan disciplined for the sexually degrading and racist statements that he made on tape 102? So yes or no question?
I want to cut into your time, so I'll let you finish, and when you're done, I'll.
Okay. I'm extremely concerned that Internal Affairs complaints are being ignored, or that the findings in Internal Affairs complaints are inconsistent with the evidence, both in violation of the Attorney General's guidelines. I made an Internal Affairs complaint about Patrolman Oost in November 2017, 16 months ago. To date, I haven't been advised of the outcome of that investigation, even though the documents I provided indisputably prove the complaint. In May 2018, I made an Internal Affairs complaint about an email sent by the Englewood Cliffs Police Department endorsing Council President Oh and Councilman Aversa. 10 months later, I haven't been advised of the outcome of that complaint either. On January 31st, 2019, the day before Captain Regan retired, I made an Internal Affairs complaint about Captain Regan. I was advised that that complaint could not be investigated because Captain Regan had retired. I wasn't aware that retirement put one above the law. With regard to Fifth Street, I hope that if it gets paved, the abutting property owners are going to be assessed for it. Their house values will increase substantially if they are living on a paved road as opposed to a dirt road. And I really don't think that the rest of the residents should be paying because someone got a favor. And I do think there needs to be an investigation into how the building permits for Fifth Street were issued in violation of borough ordinance. Finally, a censure. I've been coming to council meetings for a long time. You have not investigated, let alone censured, anyone for the very serious allegations arising from the recordings made by Chief Choppie and the allegations in the multiple lawsuits filed against Chief Choppie. You withdrew the very serious charges against Ms. Dopey and took no action against her. You didn't censure George Reddell, even though the municipal finance board found him guilty of four different ethics violations, all of which cost every taxpayer in this town money. You didn't do anything about King Kim's letter about racial profiling. I think it's perfectly obvious why you censured the mayor. It's a political theater. You've overlooked far more serious misconduct.
So one of the things that I keep asking the council and our department heads is to just apply all laws and rules equally to everyone. Think about that. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
I respectfully ask the mayor and council to pass a resolution to condemn antisemitism. I hope that resolution will inspire and encourage other towns in Bergen County and other places to do the same. The U.S. Congress failed miserably in combining antisemitism with other forms of discrimination. It can and should stand on its own. There has been an incident at the Dwight School in Englewood, where heinous symbols were found on bathroom walls. This was perpetrated by a student. To think that this is happening in a school down the road from our town is scary and unacceptable. Antisemitism is contagious and spreads like a cancer, and it spreads very quickly. As I had revealed at an earlier meeting, I am a Holocaust survivor, and I've witnessed the horrors and atrocities of antisemitism and probably bear the scars. I don't know what the punishment should be. That can be discussed, but I do know that the Holocaust should be taught in our schools and in discussions groups in the town. I have in the past, before this incident, before the incidents intensified in the United States, spoken to schools about my parents and my experience, and touched on the emergence of Nazism in Germany. The kids were very engaged and asked many questions, and some even spoke about their own families. By the way, my experience was recorded on Steven Spielberg tapes and is in the archives of the Holocaust Museum in Washington, DC. We must stop antisemitism now. Educate our children. Fight the deniers and denounce and punish the haters. History does repeat itself.
So to the council, if after we close public discussion, if anybody wants to make a motion tonight or in the future or the next meeting, if you want to prepare something more proper, we certainly welcome that introduction. And you're right, Congress did fail because Congress actually knew who the person was speaking in hateful terms, but they wanted to gloss it over, so they made it a big, they spread it far and wide rather than focus on the actual problem of antisemitism in that instance. And I think everyone's been watching the news, so you know what we're talking about. Anybody else? Yes.
Maria Valari, Forty-Five Jane Drive. I agree with Ms. Plucker about her sentiments about antisemitism. Unfortunately, our school system, led by the Democrats in the country, has been taking away history from our children. They're not learning about the horrible wars and the horrible atrocities that happened to not just the Jewish community, but also so many others like the Armenians and...
Please, 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 you can't, you can't speak up on the audience. Please, she's actually agreeing with you.
I just agree with you. There's a lot that needs to be taught. Our students do not have good enough education today to understand what has happened in our country, in the world, all over the world. That's all I'm saying. This was not a slight on Ms. Plucker. I'm sorry that she took it that way. So basically, I would like to make a statement here. At the special meeting held on March 5th, 2019, Ms. O, Mr. Aversa, Ellen Park, Ms. Savary, and Mr. Song, with the Democrat majority unanimously censured Mayor Cranjack for allegedly saying that he wanted to punch Albert Wunsch. I asked myself what motives these council people would have to censure the mayor. Could it be political? I would say that it's a definite yes. Otherwise, you might ask yourself, why would you come to that conclusion? Any reasonable person would have to ask themselves. Was Chief Chaffee censured? No. Even though Chief Chaffee, in his own words on recordings, threatened Mario Cranjack and Ms. McMorro, he used explicit sexual comments referencing actual sex acts with Borough employees. Not only was he not censured, he was given a sweet deal. They dropped all charges against the chief. They gave him a sweet deal to retire and money to go with it by Ms. O, Mr. Aversa, Ms. Park, Ms. Savary, and Mr. Song. The very people who felt that what Mayor Cranjack allegedly said was so egregious that it rose to the need of censure. Oh, Aversa, Parks, Savary, and Song, shame on you. You are transparent, and the residents of this town will remember. Two, why was George Rego not censured? He got a slap on the wrist, a small fine for unethical behavior. While they pay their taxes, he saw it, while we pay our taxes, he saw it to fix his own taxes while the rest of us must pay. Yet, oh, Aversa, Parks, Savary, and Song did not think that this was wrong, and it did not rise to the level of censure. They did not feel the need to censure Ms. Duffy. Charges were filed against Ms. Duffy last year for comments and behavior as an employee of the Borough, which was also on tape. But I forgot, she supports the Democrats. Of course, anything she does would never rise to a level of censure. I would like to know who else was given a pass for wrongdoing that has not been reported to the public. Ms. Savary, on March 5th, 2019, you said you were uncomfortable with regards to the incident during closed session. How comfortable are you with the fact that you have heard tapes whereby Chief Chaffee is referencing sexual explicit comments, sexual acts, and wanting to murder Ms. McMorro? I would guess that it did not bother you very much since you did not consider censuring Chief Chaffee. Mr. Aversa, I have personally been present at many meetings whereby you used profanities on the dais and have, on more than one occasion, rose out of your seat and asked the mayor to meet you outside. Well, all, we all know what that means. Maybe you should censure yourself for those threatening comments. I would like, I agree with Ms. Eastwood. I was going to ask the same things about, about what's going on with the internal investigations. And Mr. Aversa, you did not give her an answer. I would like an answer at the end of my statement. Ms. Geiger, at the March 5th meeting, referenced a tape and quoted passages from it. I don't remember the number of the tape right now, but I heard someone from the audience say that that particular tape was not released to the public yet. Which one of you on that dais provided that tape to Ms. Geiger? The residents have a right to know. Thank you for smiling.
I think it's so funny. Waiting. I am sitting.
So you're not going to answer? Yes, you did. You said you were going to answer, Ms. Eastwood, but I guess that was a lie too. Thank you so much.
Actually, you know, it's interesting because I actually got, I went through the letter, many letters from Lieutenant McDermott, who's in charge of IA, and all the, all investigations on the subject officers have been concluded. I was never questioned. I don't know if anyone else was, but with no findings. So either, well, I will say it in that way, but what I'll say is, people should really listen to the tapes if they're going to investigate wrongdoing.
Did you give a letter saying that it was concluded? Because I was told that I could not speak on the tapes since the investigation was over.
It's on correspondence.
But if you received that correspondence, why wouldn't you speak to us?
I gave it to the clerk to hand out to everybody. She did it, she didn't, she didn't. I'm not, I'm not your secretary. It's on correspondence.
Something as important as an IA investigation being completed...
Oh, I know it's important. Oh, I know. I know. You're the one who brought it up.
Necessary to let us know that that happened?
That's not my job. I got correspondence. It's on the agenda. The clerk first to give it to you. Well, shame on you. You gave the guy $700,000. $700,000 in reward for those tapes. Congratulations. Nicely done.
That was no, that was not a reward. Settlements.
Settlements for what?
On correspondence on the agenda, what should be placed are correspondence that are addressed to the governing body. That's what should be put on the agenda. What you gave me to put on were letters from Lieutenant McDermott regarding IA that were addressed to you. Nowhere did you state in your emails to me to forward to the governing body.
Well, that's because it's your job to do that.
No, it isn't.
It is.
Okay.
It is, actually. I gave it to you. You're the clerk. I'm not the clerk, right? You're the clerk. When you get correspondence, you hand it out to everybody.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Simple, very simple.
Sure.
The other thing is that it's lost on Ms. Savary that former Police Chief Chaffee actually was on tape discussing anti-Asian, racist, sexually explicit, sexually harassing, politically targeting, and overtime abusing conversations, and it's been all glossed over by this council. So this is what your vote, this is what your vote got you, everybody.
I look forward to reading it.
All right. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
No, Mayor, you don't get to do that.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
You don't get to do that. Okay? Don't say what we're doing. If public portion, then you should also...
So you didn't authorize $700,000?
The $700,000 was something that he worked 40 years for, okay? Everybody, Paul McMorro's husband...
That's laughable. I'll tell you why it's laughable.
You've forgotten that. No.
It's laughable.
You're wrong. Listen, this is, no, this is part of their contract. He wasn't rewarded. It was part of his contract. It was accumulated time. It was longevity. This is what he was entitled to. We settled with him to drop his lawsuits. He was paying his own legal fees. You know, there was no guarantee we were winning those lawsuits.
Listen, listen.
And things that have come about right now.
Hold on. No shouting out for the public and no fighting with the public here.
And I'm, I'm, I'm going to tell you. Wait and see. Wait and see.
Okay, we'll wait.
Wait and see what comes out.
We'll wait. Please. Okay. Can I just ask the public, as heated as this gets sometimes from that shout-out from Lucy, just come up and shout out from here if you want. But then you only have five minutes.
Mary O'Shea, Twelve Irving Avenue. A number of things. I'm going to try to go through them as quickly as I can because I really should take a half an hour and not five minutes. This thing is loose. The retirement for Captain Regan. While I was on the council, even though it was a short period of time, disciplinary charges were confirmed against Captain Regan, Captain Murphy, Lieutenant Hinkleman. And then, when the new council took over, it seemed to go up like a puff of smoke and disappear. And Mr. Rudeman was here, the labor attorney, and he said that they were going to have an Internal Affairs investigation. Well, that was on January 24th, and for Captain Regan to be able to retire a week and two days later would have to mean that the Internal Affairs investigation was completed because you cannot retire if you have an Internal Affairs allegation against you. You cannot file for your pension. So apparently, in one week and two days, everything got cleared up. And apparently, because he's retiring, I would say satisfactory to him. Also, I'd just like to know when the investigation commenced and when did it end? Okay? The attorney was here on the 24th of January, and he's retiring February 1st. Like I said, one week and two days. I'd like to know the dates in between those two dates where the investigation began and the investigation ended. I'd like, because that will give me an idea of the thoroughness of the investigation. Okay? The resolution that you have for Captain Regan has no dollar amount in here. Four months' terminal leave. How much, how much is that? Accumulated sick days, 150. How much is that? Unused vacation time. How many days and how much money? Okay? We should know the days and the money. Accumulated compensation time. That's a very, very open-ended statement. What is the time and what is the money? Five personal days? Okay, so much per day. We could be able to know that. Scheduled days. What is scheduled days? Scheduled days off, scheduled days on, scheduled days overtime? What are scheduled days? And how do you pay scheduled days? This is such a broad resolution. I don't see how any of you can vote on this tonight because you do not have any information and you're not putting it out. And then, it was said that the chief financial officer was going to work out the numbers. If he was retiring February 1st, today is March 13th, he's had five or six weeks to figure out the numbers. They should not have, they should not be unknown at this point in time. You should know the numbers, and you should tell the public. In previous resolutions with other retirements, other than recently with Chiapi and now Regan, it's all in the dark. No disclosures to the public. Okay? I put in an Oprah for the resolution on Chiapi, and I couldn't get it because it wasn't signed. Yet, like a day later, it was in the newspaper, so I don't know where, why I couldn't get it. All right? That, that's one thing. Now, the fact that Captain Regan, Lieutenant Hinkleman, and Captain Murphy were personally on the tapes with Chiapi, in the tax office, with Paul Duffy, with Janice Romano, with Fran Marinuzzi, and talking about going in the back door with Chiapi, talking about anal sex, talking about two people having sex with two bags over their head, talking about Asian people and making fun of their, their names and their language. Okay? All those things should have had some type of discipline appropriated to them and a penalty appropriated to them. You, you know, most of you are parents, and you know, if you have a child, you have to discipline them. They have to know there's, their actions get a reaction. They're going to receive a reward or they're going to be disciplined. Okay? What you've done is let every employee of this Borough know they can do whatever the hell they want, okay? And get away with it. All right? And that's the truth. Okay? And you rewarded Chiapi and God, now you're going to reward Regan. And then the next thing, you'll probably appoint Murphy chief and reward him. I mean, that's the way it goes, isn't it? The worse you are, the more you get, the better you get. All right? The other thing is with appointing the litigation counsel to the mayor. Okay? You appointed an attorney to represent Lizette and up to $20,000, and the mayor, you only approved $7,500. I think that, that they both should be approved for an equal amount, that they can get represented. Okay? Okay? Lizette shouldn't be doing, getting more representation than the mayor. All right? So I just, I just really hope that you all think about it because you're a sorry group the way you carry on here. A very bad group, okay? Very disappointed, but I'm not surprised.
Mrs. O'Shea, to clarify the resolution regarding the Oprah matters? Just to clarify the resolutions for the Oprah matters. It's just one matter that the mayor is on, and it's $7,500. The one for me is $5,000 per case. So there's a difference. No, it's $5,000. It's $5,000 per case in case I get hit with more. So he's getting... It's okay. You have to read.
I see, I see some of the residents here from Clifton Terrace. I don't know if you want to come up and speak, but if you do, if I raise your hand, they'll notice that there is an ordinance on the agenda tonight to deal with the parking situation. So anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes. No, behind you. No, behind you.
Good evening. I'm Luciana, Twenty Glory Drive. Just a question, please. There's, I believe, 21 resolutions on the agenda this evening. There's three ordinances. Now, one of them are available online.
No, we don't put them out.
I know, and I'm asking you to consider that because I think there would be questions that we would be able to see. I think there's a lot of municipalities out there that have the resolutions, that have the ordinances. I'm not talking about first-reading ordinances because those you only got to do by title. But I think if we want to be, I don't want to say transparent because everybody twists that word pretty much around here, but if we want to be more, more open to the residents, it would be helpful for us to be able to go online and see the resolutions that you're going to pass. And I've sat up there, not here, but I understand certain resolutions come up at the last minute. But the ones that you know, please put them online. Ordinances that you have, put them online. Doesn't cost anything. It's not like you have to put it in the paper, which you're required to do, but, you know, I'd like to be able to come and see the ordinances before I come to a meeting and read them or the resolutions. You have a payment of claims on there that has no total. I wouldn't vote for it.
Well, we do have a total here now.
I know you do now, and it may, it might have been last minute, but even any number. And I think, you know what? Like Englewood does, they post every single one payment that you're going to make to every single vendor. It might open up more, not that we maybe want to sit here for more questions, but you know what? know what? I would like to see what we're paying the lawyer, excuse me, sir, the engineer. I'd like to see itemized bills. If you know what you're paying and you're gonna pass a resolution for payment of claims, it would be nice to know a total instead of guesswork because it's left blank. And the agenda might have been prepared a few days ago, and I'm not picking on the clerk, but at some point, that could be updated if you knew it at twelve o'clock today. Go online and put it online.
So the, the agenda is online, the bill list gets posted after the meetings and the resolutions, as they become available, I would be a proponent of posting them online as well as they become available. Bear in mind that some of them don't become available till right before the meeting.
No, I know, I said that, but I'm, I'm saying that when they're available, and I, believe me, I understand. I understand how government works, things don't get done until the last minute, but I have to imagine out of the twenty-one resolutions, some of them have to be done. I mean, put it online, let us look at them. It's only fair. Um, how much of the hundred forty thousand dollars that, for Mazur, for Fifth Street, did we actually incur in expense? We authorized the hundred forty thousand dollars, Mazur did some type of work, we're gonna pass it on in Naglia. How much did we pay Mazur?
So I imagine that no one on council has that number right now.
No.
But what we can do is we will get you a number.
Okay. Um, I came here last month, asked about Captain Murrah, didn't remember his name, but now I have it in my head. I hope you have it in your head as well, Mr. Mayor. Um, how much are we paying Captain Murrah who hasn't worked since two thousand and sixteen, maybe two thousand and fifteen? How much is the captain's salary? You've had a month. How much are we paying Captain Murrah to not be here and work?
I, I don't know how to answer for you right now, but I don't know if Joe.
No, I don't.
I know you're new, you weren't here last month.
No.
Asked a question last month specifically, Mr. Mayor.
So the salary and assurance are still being paid, I'm, I'm informed.
Okay. And I did ask last month, and I know we played some semantics back and forth about, you know, you didn't know who he was and I should call you.
Did you call me?
I brought it, why would I call you? I brought it up in a party meeting a month ago. Someone should have at least been prepared for me to come back and say, I raised it last month. You know, I'm not gonna forget about it. I'll be here again next month. How much are we paying Captain Murrah? Captain Murrah? And what is the value of his salary that he does not come to work? And what is the, what right now is the status of his settlement and his retirement?
So the borough administrator will, will send you an email. I realize the email is not as entertaining for you as being here in public and asking us questions about things that we have no idea of knowing unless we research them, but she'll send you an email and the next month you could come and entertain us with the next question.
Okay, did you entertain me with an email between last month and this month? Because I thought you liked to say to me that.
The borough administrator will send it if she hasn't sent it already.
Luciano knows, I always follow up with him.
Absolutely, but I didn't, with all due respect, Madam Clark, I didn't ask you last month.
I know.
Thank you.
So, to put it off. I'm not telling, I didn't hit the buzzer for my time.
Hit the buzzer, well.
Hit the buzzer? Oh, okay. Um, is Ta, is Mr. Rego, is Mr. Rego tenured?
He is tenured.
So Mr. Rego's tenured. So regardless, the, the charges that, or anything that he did inappropriately really didn't fall with this mayor and council, is that correct? There's, there's statements made about what Mr. Rego had done, and that really is handled by the Department of, just to be clear, that's handled by the Department of Community Affairs. And isn't that who determined the penalty for what his inappropriate action was?
I believe it was one of the supervising entities, I'm not, I'm not sure if it was that entity, but the reason, so look, you know, Mr. Rego got penalized for lowering the assessed value on a home that he owed in town. Uh, no, I know, but I'm, I'm up here and he brought it up, so I'm telling you, which I think was wrong, tenure or no tenure, wrongdoing should be exposed. Okay? Right? Just because you have tenure doesn't mean you get to shoot people, right? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? I thought that makes it okay then, right? Because it's, yeah. All right. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes. Yes, thank you.
Could you please give a copy, you should remember the mayor and council, Mr. Borough Attorney.
Karen Geiger, two seventy Alfred Street. And as much as Mayor Cranjack and Mrs. McMorro accused me of lying about Lanza and Lanza bills at the March fifth meeting, I have made a copy of the bills from Lanza and Lanza that I received from the borough pursuant to Oprah requests, and I wish to present them to you and have at this meeting. As Dr. Berson, Mrs. Mizou, who was seated on the council in two thousand and sixteen, they recall, I publicly raised my concern about the first unredacted bill at a mayor and council meeting in two thousand and sixteen. At that time, Ms. McMorro wanted to know how I had obtained a copy of that bill, and she also stated that she did not discuss internal affairs. She stated the conference only had to do with Mauro Road. That statement is not substantiated by the bill received from Lanza and Lanza, which you have before you. As you can see, there is also a second copy of the same bill. Actually, it has additional dates of service added, but it also begins with the July twelfth, two thousand and sixteen conference, I had the date long last month, last week, for which Lanza and Lanza billed the borough for four hours. This copy shows that it was approved by the mayor. On this copy, the positions of mayor and council president are redacted. I publicly raised questions about the redactions and the appropriateness also in two thousand and sixteen. I later received a third copy of the same bill. On that version, the positions of mayor and council president were restored. However, the word internal affairs was repeatedly redacted. I want to clarify that each of the items on this bill, a bill which totaled seven thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars, relates to internal affairs. There is no mention of Mauro Road. I now have also had a copy of an email that came to me recently in a public filing. It is an email between Mayor Cranjack and former borough attorney Dennis Duffy, a partner at Schwartz Simon. As you may recall, the resignation letter from Schwartz Simon discussed in the Bergen Record article cited Rule one point one six. Rule one point one six includes three specific rules that permit a lawyer to ethically end its representation. One of the rule, parts of this rule is if a client insists upon taking action that the lawyer considers repugnant or with which the lawyer has a fundamental disagreement. The September first email from the mayor to Mr. Murphy states, quote, "Special Counsel John Lanza received all documents and interview notes from the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office." The mayor then mentions three senior police officers. I assume that the documents referred to were internal affairs investigations. I do not recall the council ever authorizing Lanza and Lanza to conduct or review any internal affairs investigations. This email also shows that the mayor discussed these matters with both Lanza and Lanza and with Dennis Murphy. The mayor wrote in a memo to Dennis Murphy on September, on September first, quote, "Over the past weeks, Dennis Murphy and I had a series of review calls with special counsel," unquote. Collectively, these items coupled with the denials by Ms. McMorro and Mr. Cranjack as recently as last week, raise serious questions which I believe merit a thorough investigation by the council to determine whether it is appropriate to contact the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office to pursue an allegation of official misconduct. I urge the council to consider either retaining retired judge to review the matter or to direct the borough attorney to follow up. Dennis Murphy and John Lanza were each attorneys hired by the mayor and council to represent its interests. As such, I do not believe that there is an attorney finding privilege that would prevent the council from learning more about the conversations that took place in July and August of two thousand and sixteen with these attorneys. In addition, I would like to ask some questions. Um, I wanted to know, have on your resolution that three hundred thousand dollars is being transferred to various lines related to COLA. I'd like to know if you can tell me how much money was spent year to day, in two thousand and eighteen, um, on fighting the COLA litigation. Um, I'd also like to know that in the record, um, litigation against the mayor, it shows that you are hiring council to represent the mayor and to represent Miss Duffy. Um, I don't understand why the borough has to fund representation costs for someone who has willingly and knowingly violated Oprah for what appears to be the third time. And fin, and finally, I'll leave it with that. Instead, I have some answers, please. Anybody?
Well, I'll, I'll get back to you regarding the actual amount because there are bills that have come in for the COLA litigation for two thousand and eighteen that didn't come in until late into two thousand and nineteen. Some of them were lost in two thousand and eighteen, so, um, I'm trying to get a handle on it. We are about two hundred and ninety-five thousand over our litigation budget, um, which is why you see the transfer of funds. So I, I can get back to you on that. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but.
So you're saying?
Thank you.
We've spent a substantial amount.
Your time's up.
I'm, I'm asking for a response.
No, your time's up, too. Your time is up. They put the rule in place, not me. I would let you, I would let you speak here for an hour if you wanted.
No, you wouldn't. Let's not be facetious.
You have in the past. So, uh, just to clarify, I sense a false narrative being circulated by certain people regarding Lanza and Lanza. Lanza and Lanza was retained for two matters. The first matter was Mauro Road and that dealt with the negligence of Boswell Engineering in the storm drain system that they installed. And, and that meeting with Lanza, John Lanza, uh, did involve Cal McMorro, uh, who was borough council president at the time, and myself. Okay, that was one. And it's completely separate from the second item that we hired Lanza and Lanza for, which was, uh, an internal affairs, um, matter. And that only, those correspondence, communications, and there are no meetings, there are only phone calls, uh, that only involved Dennis Murphy, who was our outside counsel, borough counsel at the time, and me. It did not, under any circumstances, involve Cal McMorro. Okay? So let's just be clear about that. And I, actually, I thank you for, for handing this email chain to me because I forgot it existed, Miss Geiger, so I'll, I'll redevelop in part, which was, um, my email going to the council, uh, basically saying, "Special Counsel John Lanza received all documents sent to the Bergen County Prosecutor and all interview notes received from the Bergen County Prosecutor regarding Chief Chiotti's false statements, et cetera, and Deputy Chief McMorro, Lieutenant Tracy Matter. While the BCP did not find criminality in either investigation regarding Chief Chiotti, the BCP did find inconsistent testimony among police officers in need for internal affairs retraining," which was done, by the way, "and possible rule breaches. Over the past weeks, Dennis and I," this is Dennis Murphy, uh, who was our outside counsel, "and I had a series of review calls with special counsel. Special counsel confirmed that we absolutely had a duty to refer both matters to the prosecutor for investigation." Okay? That's it.
So there was a resolution appointing Lanza and Lanza to this IA investigation?
I believe our outside counsel retained him as special counsel. I could go back and check.
So this?
Yes.
This council didn't approve of that?
This council did not, because this is from two thousand and sixteen. It was a different council. Okay? So I know that this might bring to a grinding halt the false narrative that you're creating, um, but, you know, you, you can't just keep reinventing facts, okay? Facts are facts, they could be proven, and I've just proven that, you're wrong. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes? Okay, somebody, one or the other. Yeah. The resident yielded to you.
Tony Morfes, twice at John Street in Woodcliff's. Good evening. I'd like to make, uh, I'd like to answer Ms. O'Shea, the way she's not the board, the council. I think everybody tries to do their best, whether we like them or not. When we look at, Ms. O'Shea sits on the planning board, and I read the decision of Judge Farrington, that she said that the planning board was wrong and capricious. And if I'm correct, Ms. O'Shea voted for that. Nobody's knocking an individual. And it's not right just to go and attack everybody for their beliefs because they think they're right in what they're doing. Now, Mr. Mayor, I Googled a few things and I found a few things. And leaving them aside, there's a lot of false narratives, quite a few. You know them better than I know them.
No idea what you know.
Let's stop being divisive. Let's stop, when somebody sues you as an attorney, and we'll leave it at that and you settle it. Let's just leave it. Let's stop knocking people. Let's work with people.
Yeah, well, I prevailed there.
No, you didn't, you settled.
And by the way.
You didn't, you settled.
You don't wanna be divisive, but you do that. You be divisive, so.
You settled.
You, you actually.
Sir, you settled.
You actually serve time because you wouldn't provide hot water.
I did, I did.
For your tenants.
I did better than you did. You represented somebody and tried to steal his product.
Not, not true.
It is true, that's what's in the papers. And you settled.
No, not true. I'm glad you're not trying to be divisive tonight, Mr. Morfes.
I know you're not. I know you're not. You wouldn't. But people should read this.
Listen, I'm, I'm used to you and I'm used to the others.
No, 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 no.
You actually went to jail because you were the provider of hot water and heat to your tenants.
I told you, if you did not pay.
You wanna hit, I will stand my ground and hit right back.
He would take your license away.
Not true.
Yes, it is.
Not true.
It is true.
You're silly. Your action's silly.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, you are.
No, I'm not. Anybody can read it on Google.
Yeah, and anybody could smell ham sandwich, right?
Really? Then why did you settle?
But you know what's interesting?
Why did you settle? You didn't prevail.
Because I did prevail because you had no idea what happened after that.
Yes.
By the way, uh, you're, you're basically referencing somebody who's, um, got bigger problems right now. But what I'll say is that I found most interesting about your situation, that the judge asked your tenants what the penalty should be, and they said you should make him live in the building that we're living in.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
All right, enough.
And now you're making us leave our town.
And how, how are you making, how are you making this a better town? How?
Am I making it a better town? Look at what you've done to town.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, sir.
Let's get four hundred more apartments.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, really? I'm opposed to that, sir.
You're opposed?
I'm opposed to that. No, I'm opposed to it, sir. You're, you're making up stories.
No, I'm not.
Making up stories.
You're going to.
You know what? The, the, the problem is.
The decision of the judge.
The problem is.
The case you went to, you lost.
Here's the problem.
And you're some lackey's lackey.
The, the problem is that the people who tell you what to say don't tell you why. So you come up here and you have soundbites, which are silly.
Don't tell me anything.
All right. Anybody else wishing to be heard? You need to stop talking now.
Yeah, right. Bing, bing.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, I'm sorry, sir, you need to come up here.
Would you permit me to speak from here, that I don't have to scramble across all these four channels?
The, the problem is we need to have you recorded and we can't pick up the recording from there, sir. I'm so sorry.
Excuse me, folks. Sorry about this. It's not be worth the trip for a guy like that.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, but I gotta, I have to follow rules. It's always good to see you, though, and I, I know you're from Clifton Terrace, so.
My name is Wolfgang Reich, I live at ten Fifth and Terrace. Uh, the reason I am here is to find out what's gonna happen to the ordinance that you included in the agenda tonight. That's all we're here for and we don't wanna have any more debate if that is in fact what we're gonna approve.
I am hoping that this council will approve it. I, I see a lot of heads shaking, so I don't want, you know, I don't wanna tell you that it's already approved, but it will be voted on later. Yeah, it'll be voted on tonight.
Okay.
And I, I have a.
Soon I hope.
I'm confident that it'll be approved.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. And I hope that solves the problem on Clifton Terrace also.
Actually, I have a question about the mayor. Have you talked to you or the restaurant about the question?
I did, he was gonna try it out and he was, uh, in the process of planning, um, now for the residents of Clifton Terrace, I know last time, uh, the suggestion was made that the owner of the restaurant implement a valet parking system, uh... a valet parking system. He does so in Edgewater. He was going to try it here as well, but you know as well as I do that not everybody wants their cars valeted, so he was going to try it and get back. And he was very amenable to finding a solution for the residents. I know somebody, one of the residents, sent me a photo over the weekend, and the cars were all backed up. I think he sent me the... Did you send me the photo, sir? Yes, that photo. Yes, you did. Yeah, so it's just been very cooperative, and I'm hoping that the ordinance and the combination of valet parking will alleviate the situation for everybody. Okay. Yes, sir. Dave, can you just hold off a second? Since we're on the Clifton Terrace subject, is one resident that raised their hand. Can I just let them go? Yes, sir. Try to group our subjects together. Thank you, David.
Yendu, from the 11th Clifton Terrace. First, I want to show a photo of the event, standing in the corner. It's like 42nd Street. This was taken a few days ago. Both sides of 42nd Street. And the dump car parking in my driveway had a police officer to give the ticket, and in the block in my driveway. And in the back, here's the phone call I called to the police department, because sometime they're cheating, taking a note. Yeah, so I took like, I called like 16. And my neighbor called about 10. Sometime taking a note, but I take all the notes, what time I called. So since last meeting here, I saw the situation is not changing much, because there's no valet parking yet. But I believe even without valet parking, there may not be a problem, because some people don't want to pay $2 for parking. You just go through the street right away, because the one guy parking in front of it, I told him, they don't want to park. I don't want to pay $2, $1 for people. I can park here, I can walk down there. This is different, assuming different from the Edgewater. Edgewater is on a river road. They have the cliff, so you cannot go to back. You're only going to be, you're only staying on River Road, so you cannot go to that. And this one is still closed, so I think that's going to, even though valet parking may not be a problem. Now, the warmer, it's going to warmer, and the summer, I think, I have table outside, it opened, there are more people coming in, because now they only open indoors. Now, outdoor, I have like 10 more tables. But they may have more and more people coming in. So we called up this office, officer, come many times, appreciate you guys, spend a lot of time, and come here, and they say, you know, I can't stop them coming here, because we have one hour parking site. We only gave the valet until they have the parking model on. So they have to come back and forth waiting for them. This is impossible.
So I know the police department has been keeping up with the situation and doing a very good job. I know they've marked, they've marked over 80 vehicles, like over 60 vehicles, I believe, in the last period, and they've summoned, I think, between 8 and 15. I'm not sure exactly. I think 8, actually.
I appreciate that.
Got some ones. But there's other things going on in town also, so the police officers need to address other issues also.
I appreciate that. I saw them come from, almost every time called, they come on time or a little bit later, and they always come, so I appreciate that. And I'm trying to just say, as long, since this one, we are, we are, we are people here, we like the people to business with us. There's no problem. They pay property tax, we pay property tax also. We whole street pay property tax also. And, but the business and people cannot interfere with the residents, because we are not talking about the, we're talking about the quality of life. So we are street like terrible. If anyone want to leave this street? No. My dog, he don't want to come on. Come on, don't go back right away. There's no place for them. I have a dog, and he don't want to come. Just turn around, I'll go right away. So I very appreciate, and I saw the agenda tonight, I saw you guys, police audience tonight, I very appreciate it. I'm very appreciative, as I'm a good representative of the council.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm very appreciative. All the people in our street, I saw you put a lot of street out as well. So I think all the people will remember this. You save our time, save us life, save us quality of life.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Yes, David.
Dave DiGregorio, 165 Charlotte Place, Englewood Cliffs. Couple of quick comments. First of all, I'd like to commend all of the voters that chose Debbie Savari and Jimmy Fung to stand on the council. You bring professionalism, level-headedness, and I'm just so happy that you're there and that you're working for all of us. And I think it, I think the voters made the absolute right decision. And I thank everyone for, and you also have a little touch of maverick, each one of you, which I think all council people should have, a little touch of maverick. If they feel something is maybe a little more Republican, or a little more Democrat, what the heck? You're working for the betterment of the whole community. So I commend the residents for voting you, and thank you for your time and dedication. I would like to also encourage if the owner of the Pancake House, what is it called? The Pancake Factory?
Brownstone.
Brownstone. I would like to speak directly to that owner and encourage him to purchase pancakes and a nice breakfast for every resident on Clifton Terrace. I think it's owed to them for putting up with the parking. And certainly, if they charge for parking on Clifton Terrace, would certainly be more than a break even. So to the German resident, Van Kuchenfahre, on your street. Also, I have a couple of comments, which I will address. Who is in charge of the, Ellen, you're in charge of recreation, correct? So I'll talk to you maybe privately afterwards. But one more observation, and I, Mayor Krenjek, I do feel badly for you, that it seems like when you, when you lost the majority on the council, you seemed to stand the whole meeting. And I, it just seems to me like you, why don't you sit down and be comfortable?
I am very, I'm very comfortable.
You're standing at this tall...
In fact, I'll tell you, I actually started my day off in Tokyo, so it would have been 5:00 PM your time last night.
More.
And been going ever since, and it's just all good. I'm happy to see you here.
More, more power to you, but I would really encourage you, after all of that travel, to sit down and relax.
I am relaxed.
And be one with everybody here. All right?
Thanks so much. Thank you, David. Those are very meaningful comments. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Carol McMorro, 49 Summit Street. Mayor, just for the record, Lizette in 2016 was the borough administrator, and she always distributed the mail and answer to Ms. Savari. Any correspondence was just par course for her job. She just distributed it as it came in correspondence. So Ms. Savari, if you have a question about why you didn't receive it, you need to ask the administrator. Also, the agenda went up at 8:45 last night. You guys are going in the opposite direction. Agendas are going up with less and less time to the public. That's less than 24 hours. Disgusting, okay? You ran on transparency, so another campaign pledge that you're violating.
A correction found the bulletin board, just so you know. It was posted 48 hours prior.
You can't expect residents to drive into Borough Hall to see it. Please post it, anyway. At last month's council meeting, the borough clerk, Lizette Duffy, sat quiet while she heard member Karen Geiger make untruthful statements about her reasons for the redactions on the Lanza and Lanza bills. That Ms. Duffy, as borough clerk, made on those bills. Let's get this straight, guys. The clerk makes the redactions on the bills, not council people. Ms. Duffy makes her own redactions, and Ms. Duffy alone is responsible for doing them correctly or incorrectly.
Yeah.
To continually blame everything on what a lawyer told you to redact or not redact doesn't hold water, as Ms. Duffy is a licensed clerk and is well aware, or should be well aware, of what the laws governing Oprah are. Ms. Geiger also stated, "I did hear tape number 78, and I believe that's the one on Lanza and Lanza." And she stated it was distributed by the borough, end quote. I am the, this is Ms. Geiger speaking. I am, no, excuse me, this is me speaking now. "I am the one that wants to have tape 78 be made public, to allow the public to hear the egregious acts that Administrator Clerk Duffy, Gloria O., Etta Versa, and Chief Chaffey engaged in, and they're working against this borough, and they're breaching their fiduciary responsibilities to the taxpayers of this town, and to try and falsify facts for their political gain. Instead, last week, without any type of medical investigation, this borough council clearly did not ask to interview me," they didn't ask to interview me, I heard the mayor say he wasn't interviewed, "to find out what information I had, and instead dismissed all charges against Ms. Duffy on this matter. You did not want an investigation, because the truth and the facts are not on your side." Ms. Geiger also stated, quote, "She received several copies of doctored Oprah requests related to Lanza and Lanza," end quote. Ms. Geiger went on to state that, quote, "There was clearly a conference between the mayor and Mrs. McMorro regarding internal affairs." I don't know how Ms. Geiger would know that, since she wasn't at the meeting with John Lanza, the mayor, and myself, when we discussed the Morrow Road flooding issues, but she seems to know it all. Ms. Geiger, for the record, your assertions are completely without merit, and you knowingly made false allegations, which should have no place in public discourse. The conference on the invoice was in regard to the Morrow Road flooding and discussions about the years of facts leading up to the flooding on Morrow Road. If anyone is that concerned on this matter, all they have to do is Oprah my emails on this subject. Ms. Duffy, as an administrator and a borough clerk, you are supposed to be apolitical while you are in the workplace. If you focused on doing your job, instead of focusing on these bad acts, you would not be causing this borough to get sued as many times as it has been getting sued. Ms. Savari, you are supposed to remain impartial until you hear all the facts on whatever is being put before you on a vote. At the March 5th special mayor and council meeting, you revealed your bias. I would like everyone to know, including this borough, that I am putting all of you on notice, and that I am considering anyone that repeats these baseless accusations about me to be disaming. Last, I see Timothy Regan and his retirement on the agenda. It was my understanding, from what Mr. Rubenerman stated at the 12419 council meeting, I guess, that there was going to be an investigation into what Captain Regan said on the tapes regarding his racist and sexual gender-based comments. Okay? I was never contacted for an interview. What happened, Mr. Versa?
What are you asking me, Chris?
Yeah, on at 4:38. Okay. Last, if there's, I heard Ms. Geiger bring up investigations with the contact with the BCP on charges of official misconduct, and I'll state, you want to investigate official misconduct, make sure you include Ms. Duffy, make sure you include Chief Chaffey, and make sure you include some of the other Englewood Cliffs police officers that are on those tapes that all of you are closing your eyes to. Okay? John Lanza's bill says, "Conference with mayor and council president." No word does it say about internal affairs. Shame on each and every one of you, especially you, Ms. Savari.
Thank you.
Especially you.
Is there anybody else on the public wishing to be heard?
Mayor, point of order. Before, before another council, someone from the public comes up, I'd like to say something for the record.
Question.
Hold on, please.
The matter responds to...
I'm not responding to you, Mrs. McMorro. I'm responding to the public and to every member on this stage. I do not repeat, I do not redact invoices from attorneys. I have emails to them, and I forward them Oprah requests that state that bills have been offered for a period of time, their bills. They redact, and they provide me with their bills. However, I do redact, sometimes with the assistance of a borough attorney, emails that go between the mayor or council members or newspaper, whatever, if it has to be redacted, I get the consent of a borough attorney. But however, all billing, whether it's Lanza, Boswell, Mazur, I get it through the attorney itself representing the borough. In fact, all of Anne Marie Rizzuto's bills, she sends them to me, approved for Oprah. She would write that on the top, so I wouldn't have to contact her to redact. These Lanza bills that are in question were redacted by Mr. Lanza. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I have a question, though.
Point of order.
Why do you have the bill on your computer? Why do you have the bill? Can you just point to your...
Yeah, so that's not proper for a public portion. It's a public document, but yeah, it's probably...
Are you allowed to do something?
No, I think it's a public document. I think somehow it's been produced somewhere.
The bill is on courts online?
It's an Oprah, it's an Oprah bill.
Yeah.
It's on courts online, had to have been part of some litigation.
Somebody attached it to a litigation.
So what litigation was that attached to?
Oh, God. Can we get back to borough business? Let's make this a better place. Anybody else? Anybody else wanted to be heard?
He's up here.
Yes, there you are. Everybody's like...
That's okay, we can continue later.
All right. Russ Marino, 220 February Avenue. I want to shed a little light, if possible, on the Fifth Street question regarding the sewers. There was an application before the board a couple of years ago by the applicant, a young lady, I think, is a representative of that applicant. And one of the conditions of approval that we granted at that time was that they would grant easements across their property from Sixth Street, from Fifth Street down to Sixth Street, to provide the necessary egress for the sewer, to install sewer pipes, storming sanitary sewer. What happened was, their approval lapsed at least once, at least twice. They came back in, asked for a renewal, which we agreed to. Second time came around, and they did not agree to a second, they didn't come in the second time, they let their approval lapse. I think there was some disconnect between what was said by various people here, but basically, that was the only way that the professionals could find of getting the sewers off Fifth Street. My recollection is, it's an issue with elevations. Fifth Street runs downhill from, going from south to north. So the pipe in Fort Lee, the elevation of the sewer pipe that's there, my recollection is, was just too high. You wouldn't be able to have a gravity flow from the end of Fifth Street heading south to Fort Lee. So I think that's what the hitch was, even though Mr., the councilman Savari from Fort Lee spoke to Fort Lee being maybe on board with the concept, I think there's an issue with, with the engineering on it. So my suggestion is, the new engineer could contact Mazur, the planning board engineer, or me, and I think we could probably put our heads together and find a solution, maybe getting that whole project on track, first being the assessment, special assessment, potentially, for the street, to get that improved. I mean, that was the goal that we were trying to work on, and I know the council, you know, last year, the year before, was trying to find a way through with that, too. So I think that's where it's at. And the client, as you can see, was here, and she still seems amenable to, you know, granting that easement. But I think they want to see is that the street's going to be installed, too. They just don't want to give an easement and not, you know, get the, at some point in the future, the benefit of, of a improved street.
I think, from what I understand, they just wanted to see the study done and then take a comeback.
The study was held up specifically because of the easement question. They realized that they couldn't, the engineers could not perceive the design without having a place for the flow to go, basically.
So the engineers decided that the Fort Lee easement wouldn't work. We couldn't do it for Fort Lee because of...
There was an issue with the elevation, the pipe in Fort Lee, the present pipe that's there that services Fort Lee.
Right.
Side of Fifth Street, that elevation is so high that you wouldn't be able to continue going uphill without being out of the ground as you move to the north.
So is the cost going to be increased because of, was it...
You'd have to put in, I guess you have to put in a pump station would be, you know, what would have to be done and that's hundreds of thousands of dollars too.
Okay.
So the path of the least resistance or the appropriate path, we decided, was to go through that easement and back out to Sixth Street. You also got to deal with the stormwater. And, you know, so you're dealing with not just sanitary, but it's a stormwater as well too. So one other point I wanted to make too, I saw on the agenda, under new business, old business, is the Northern Valley Greenway initiative. That's something I brought up at the last meeting and I would urge the council to adopt a resolution supporting that initiative. There was an open house back on March the 5th, which I attended. I met the gentleman who's spearheading, I'll call him the director of the, of this program, his name is Andrew McKesh. Councilman Versa may know him, may have talked to him. So I suggest that in matters like this, it takes not just bipartisan support here, it's a countywide effort that needs to be, your support has to be enlisted, you know, by the representatives that represented us at the county level, even at the state level, to really get that project moving along. And it's a rails-to-trails concept. It's been very successful in other parts of the country and I urge the council to speak up and let's get the word out about this and next time I hear about there being another open house or a session, I'll bring it to the council's attention.
Thank you. And thank you for serving as our planning board chairman. I appreciate the professionalism and the answers. You're one of the few people who actually came up here tonight with answers and solutions. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Have a motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I just wanted to mention that, you know, at the last, at the last meeting, I really didn't appreciate being censured for something that didn't actually happen and now I know what it means to be the only Republican in the room. So here's what I, well, William Moon was not there. And so, I just wanted to make the record clear because the Bergen Record kind of had fun with this also and their deceptive headline, Katie, here there, taking pictures, I know. So let me just read this into the record. It's a proclamation of vindication, March 13, 2019. Whereas on March 5th, 2019, council members Gloria Oliver de Versa, Allen Park, Deborah Savari, and Jimmy Song falsified the narrative of events that took place in the closed session meeting on February 27, 2019. Whereas on March 5th, 2019, council members Ola Versa, Park, Savari, and Song wrongly voted to censure or express disapproval of what they falsely claimed were my actions in the February 27, 2019 meeting. Whereas the actions by council members Ola Versa, Savari, Park, and Song to place me in a false light shall not go unanswered by me. I'm answering it right now. And whereas I reiterate in this proclamation that I stood my ground on February 27, 2019 while being assaulted by Albert Wunsch, and I will stand my ground with council members Ola Versa, Park, Savari, and Song here. To wit, and the clapping you hear is from a political operative from the other side, Andrew Nikal, whose name is quite common. To wit, the subject portion, let me tell you what happened, actually. To wit, one, the subject portion of the February 27, 2019 closed session meeting had in attendance council members Ola Versa, Park, Song, and Savari, with Councilman Woo, the lone Republican council member being absent. Also in the room was the borough clerk and then acting borough attorney Albert Wunsch. Two, during the relevant portion of the meeting, I told Mr. Wunsch that he had a conflict of interest. I tell him this all the time, but he never listens and he reacted. And I told him he had a conflict of interest in appearing in court on behalf of the governing body. Since I am part of the governing body and he and I have several existing conflicts between us. I also reiterated, number three, I also reiterated that Mr. Wunsch had grave conflicts of interest in even being acting borough attorney, since his law firm represented clients who were adverse to the borough, right up until his swearing in as an acting borough attorney. He represented Captain Murphy and his disciplinary charges, the list goes on. It was ridiculous that he even served. Four, Mr. Wunsch disagreed with me and he rose from his seat, which was two over to my right, and then stood over me screaming and waving his hands in my face. Five, I remained seated and I told him that he needed to back away from me and if he did not, or if he struck me, I will stand my ground and defend myself. Make sure you get all this, Katie.
That's not true.
Six, disappointingly, disappointingly, but not surprisingly, no one else in the room asked Mr. Wunsch to back away from me. Why should they? He's their guy. Number seven, Councilwoman Savari even confirmed at the March 5th, 2019 meeting that I remained seated while Mr. Wunsch stood over me and yet she still voted to censure me. Eight, Officer Paples came into the room as well and he saw me seated with Mr. Wunsch standing over me. So Mr. Wunsch was the aggressor and then tried to spin the narrative with his council backers.
That's okay.
That he was a victim. He was a victim, while in fact...
Lying a guy.
While in fact, he is nothing more than a playground cry bully. That's something weird, think about it. Cry bully, right? So now therefore, being here by proclaimed by the mayor of Englecliff, that violent speech or action, the tolerance of violent speech or action, and the entreatfulness by Councilmen Ola Versa, E. Park, Savari, and Song, and Albert Wunsch, regarding the February 27, 2019 closed session meeting are unacceptable and contrary to good government. Therefore, Councilmembers Ola Versa, Park, Savari, and Song, and Albert Wunsch, be, and hereby admonished, deprimed, and censured and reprimanded. Enough. Get back to work, everybody. Get back to work. I'm not putting up with this, okay? No one said that just because I'm here, I have to put up with this, okay? I stand my ground. All right, enough. Let's get to work. Name of the claims, Resolution 19-79. You don't get to do that, sir. If you can't, if they're quiet, you have to leave.
We have them up.
Resolution 19-79, February 14, 2019 through March 13, 2019. Eight million, seven hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Can I have a motion to approve this? Have a second.
Second.
Let's have a roll call.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Ola Versa?
Yes.
O.
Man, the next one is a public hearing on ordinance.
Okay, folks, into public, please.
Want me to read it?
We're on the ordinance and folks, okay, yes.
Ordinance 2019-03, model ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits to establish a cat bank NJSA 40A colon four dash or five point fourteen. We need to open to the public. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public is open? No one? Motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Ola Versa?
Yes.
O. Yes, thank you. Twenty-nine, I'm sorry, 2019...
Hold on a second. Sorry, you just came in, you know, which one we're doing? All right.
2019-04, ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Englecliff, Chapter 2, Section 2, dash thirteen point sixteen, entitled fees in regard to traffic control, workplace safety, to establish and dedicate administrative fee. We need a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard just on this ordinance, okay, please raise your hand. Let me recognize you, come up same as before. Yes?
Want me to just tell you what it is? What it's for? It's the administrative fee that we had, did two years ago to get additional funds for programs for the borough like Dare and other programs for the borough. So when outside companies come in to do, I'm sorry, when outside companies come in and need traffic detail, we want to be able to charge them, not just for biking, but for anything.
It's on the back of the fourth physical page that you have.
Okay. That's what it's for. Anyone from the public? No motion to close?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
You're welcome.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Ola Versa?
Yes.
Ordinance 2019-05, and ordinance amending Chapter 3, Section 3, dash 12, entitled resident visitor parking on certain designated public streets, specifically 3, dash 12, point 2, and Section 3, dash 12, point 7, of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Englecliff, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey. I need a motion to open to the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public?
Yeah, anyone from the public who wishes to be heard just on that motion. I know we've heard from people on Clifton Terrace already. This is the actual ordinance that's being introduced to alleviate the problem with traffic. So if there's anyone else that want it to be heard, please raise your hand now and speak to this.
Will you remove those other streets of the listed net ordinance?
I'm sorry?
Will you remove the other streets?
We didn't change any of the other streets. I just printed the whole entire ordinance. Absolutely.
We're adding...
We're adding, we're adding Clifton Terrace to that list.
Yeah.
Residential.
Residential.
Residential parking.
Is that...
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, 25 hours.
So they can park on that apartment?
Correct. Correct.
They can, but if they do, then they're in violation.
Yeah, because some of them we can't get during the day, they park, they dump their cars out of New York.
Yeah, they shouldn't do that.
Nothing's changing on that ordinance, other than adding Clifton Terrace.
Yeah, the ordinance stays the same, we're just adding one street.
So whatever...
But that ordinance, they don't have the ability, they can't just tend to the morning.
Then we have to later on look at it, right?
They can park there and they can walk.
Yeah, but that's fine. But I'm talking to people from New York, it's something...
No, that we can't have. You'll have to call the police department if you see that.
Oh, actually, yeah. I don't know if that part's in this, or if that part's changed.
You'll have to let the police know there's people without permit stickers.
Can you change that?
What do you mean? It's residential parking only, right?
It's not the first.
Let me see if you want to, I can't...
Yeah.
Residential permit parking only?
Eight to seven.
Eight to seven.
It's eight to seven.
Eight AM to seven PM.
But those are permits, eight to seven. So those are residents with a permit, right.
No vehicle can park six on any residential street. That's the current.
Right, what, for the purposes of this ordinance, all we did was add Clifton Terrace, that it's only residential parking. No other part of the ordinance was looked at.
A lot of those streets on that end are Eighth Street or...
Right. The all, again...
They have to park during the day, dump their cars.
And we, I guess, the mayor and council can look into it.
So...
For purposes? What street?
Clifton Terrace.
Right, it's for them.
It's for the person in the day to go to Brown.
Who is?
Let's just go through this. It's residential parking only. So why don't, let's, let's do this. I'd like to get it done tonight, so can we take...
We can't, we're gonna have to reintroduce it. It would have to be...
Why would that make you happy?
No, it's okay.
It should have made it a little more clear.
All right, so...
It's not a big difference.
No, you can't. No, it was already introduced.
I'm with that, Anderson.
I think it's not, it's not a substantial change.
No, you can't.
It's definitely a substantial change. You can pass that, oh, you, I would suggest...
It's streets designated, streets designated for restricted parking.
You want to change the hours in the next...
They need the sticker.
Use a new ordinance with different hours.
So we could pass this one tonight.
I'm sorry, what, what is it?
What are you saying? We'll have this tonight, I don't think it's serious.
This was looked over by the police department. Right.
Okay.
It should be a good...
Okay. All right. We have to, we'll adopt it the way it is?
We'll approve this tonight and then we'll change the hours.
Can I make you do this emergency, you know, parking to the hour?
No.
I don't care about your name. Don't call to me and don't...
Oh, come on, guys. Come on, everybody, get along out there. We all live in the same town, we're neighbors.
Will the sign say residential parking only?
Yes, yes.
Resident designated for restricted parking. So nobody will really know what the hours are. It says residential parking and then we'll change it. We'll change it on another ordinance, but in the meantime, the sign is the same sign.
Did you put emergency parking? Did you get it done properly?
It's not an emergency.
Well, the sign is gonna be the same. It's gonna say residential parking only.
It says, "No vehicle shall park on any residential street between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM unless it displays a borough parking permit sticker in accordance with signs located on the borderlines of the borough property."
And they're not here, 6:00 AM.
That, that was, that's the ordinance. We've always had that on the ordinance.
They can't, they can't, it's not down there. During the day.
It has to permit...
24 hours?
Okay, so we'll, let's do that.
We'll prove it evidence.
Right, and then we'll add, write it in, and write in the hours.
Yeah, you can, I would, if you want inclined to, I would pass it now and then you'll introduce one with the changed hours the next week.
Right, that makes sense. Let's pass it as...
You don't have to answer the tickets.
Let's take it, Bob.
All right, we have a resident that's commenting.
Karen Geiger, 270 hours, we have only ordinance. Mine have an interim solution, I'm just suggesting for the borough attorney. There are two lines here. One says parking permit stickers located on a residential motor vehicle will permit the borough, will permit the vehicle to be parked on borough streets unless otherwise posted. Why just put down on your street what the otherwise posted is until you can effectuate the new ordinance which clarifies it relative to Clifton Terrace? No vehicle shall park on any residential street, doesn't have to be read in conjunction with that as dispositive of the first statement. You can still issue your parking, I believe. No parking is permitted on this particular street without a residential permit, period. Just have the sign say that when you put it up.
The sign has to reflect the ordinance, though.
It says, "Unless otherwise posted." That's what this ordinance now says. It then has another line in it which says, "No vehicle shall park on..." Those two don't have to be read in conjunction. They can be two separate statements in the ordinance. It depends how you read it.
They're in the same, but they're in the same subsection, so...
It's how you read it. I'm suggesting this until a new ordinance can be passed. I don't think it clarifies, you can arrange this, clarify our powers for the borough and...
I would say go ahead and pass it as.
Go, pass it as, all right, anybody else in the public wishing to be heard? All right, can we close the public person?
Yeah, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to introduce this?
Okay, I'm sorry, who ruled it? I did.
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. And the rest are all resolutions. Would you like to do consent?
Given the hour.
So I, I think a consent is fine, subject to, um, eighty-six, I, I have to figure out if I'm gonna approve that council or not, but that's, I guess, you could still approve the resolution. And we, we added 102, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what I'll do is, um-
Let me ask the council, does anybody have a conflict or are you recusing or abstaining from any of these? If you are, just mention it now to the clerk before the vote.
So let me just do this, uh, motion for consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. All right, so what I'm doing is, uh, all resolutions, 2019, eighty through 102, which we added in closed session. I need a motion. If you're gonna refuse or abstain, just read the numbers out.
Just to clarify, we added 102 after closed session in caucus. Do you need to read it now or?
No.
Okay, you read it before, that's fine.
Okay. You know what, let me read it by title. Okay, uh, 102, resolution authorizing reduction of hours of the position of director of recreation for reasons of economy and efficiency. Okay. May I have a motion for the resolutions to be approved on consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Councilperson Wu?
Um, yes to all, with the exception of resolutions eighty-four.
Is that enough?
No, no on resolutions eighty-four and no on the resolution to increase the authorization not to exceed on borough, former borough attorney Wunsch. Which, which one is that? With Albert Wunsch?
More on one.
One on one, okay.
Thank you.
John, can you just clear that door?
Can I just make a quick statement? Um, regarding the retirement of Captain Regan, um, while I commend him for his years of service in Englewood Cliffs, the actions of Captain Regan with respect to what was said in the recordings-
Okay, can I just ask the public's indulgence for another twenty minutes? We just saved about an hour with the resolutions going into this.
Yeah, regarding the retirement of Captain Regan, uh, while I commend him for his years of service in Englewood Cliffs, the actions of Captain Regan with respect to what was said in the recordings made by our former police chief on tape 102 is not acceptable. Um, I know previously at a meeting that I wasn't here, uh, one of our residents had made a comment that, uh, I inaccurately mentioned that, um, you know, racial slurs that we use on the tape were inaccurate and, you know, I, I wanna make, this is a statement for the record, clearly on those tapes, Asian names are being ridiculed in a town where over forty percent of population is now Asian and a council of four Asian council members. If Italian names or Jewish names or any other ethnicity were ridiculed in the same manner, I am sure it would have made the headlines and also have been handled appropriately. This should never happen again. As such, I'm avoiding no on the entitlements to be paid to Captain Regan as part of the retirement package.
Song?
Uh, yes to all.
Sabari?
Yes to all.
Park?
Uh, I'm gonna abstain on ninety, ninety-one, and ninety-nine.
I'm sorry, ninety?
Ninety-one.
I'm abstaining on ninety, ninety-one, and ninety-nine?
Yes.
Okay.
And I say yes to all.
Aversa?
Yes to all.
Oh?
Yes to all.
So we're, um, introducing, like, first reading ordinance, 2019-06, an ordinance permitting charitable organizations to solicit contributions in the roadway situated in the borough of Englewood Cliffs. Uh, so the plain English reading of this is we're trying to help the fire department be able to raise money with their, um, what do you call that, a boot drive? Boot drive? Yeah, so it's like they stand in the road and raise money. I've seen it in Four Lee in Englewood quite a bit.
Would they stay on the road?
You put money in their boots?
Okay.
We'll go for a drive together. No?
Okay. Aversa, I need a second?
Second.
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, now, um, both, yes? Um, I'm abstaining.
Okay, um-
Do you want to introduce by title just in case this way at the next meeting, I'll read the question. So we are going to introduce by title the ordinance amending the parking just in case we, we neglect something?
How are you gonna introduce it by title, would they, gonna have to publish it?
And I'll, I'll publish it. The lead and I, we can work together on the, uh, on your-
Joe, are we gonna introduce one or just amend it the other one?
Yeah, I mean, it depends, I don't know what, I'm not familiar enough with your parking ordinances to know if you have other areas where you have no parking longer than the 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, so we may have to do a separate section of an ordinance for that.
All right, so what we may be able to do is we'll have a special meeting on other things and maybe we'll introduce this. All right. All right, um, committee, council member reports, can I just start at the West End? End of that with William Wu?
Nothing on historical and beautification.
Councilman Song?
Yeah, uh, nothing on building grounds, DPW, sanitation, recycling, etc.
Councilwoman Sabari?
Finance, I met with Steve Wilcox today just to start the preliminary review and I'll be setting up, um, is this on?
Yes, I just put it closer to you. Yeah, it's on, just put it closer.
Red, red, red.
We don't have green.
Okay, um, so on the finance committee, we're starting the budget process. I met with Steve Wilcox today and I'll be setting up public meetings to, uh, speak with department heads.
Will you be scheduling budget workshops anytime soon?
That's what I am.
Okay, you don't have any dates now, all right?
I don't have dates yet, I just met, I just got a preliminary draft of the budget from Chris and Steve and, um, believe me, it's, it's gonna be a real challenge this year, based on all these legal fees.
Councilwoman Park?
Um, we haven't had a board of health meeting yet. We do have three appointments and just waiting to hear back from one, so if we do have a special meeting, um, regarding the ordinance, perhaps we can also add the, um, appointment of the borough, um, board of health members.
Sure.
We, you want to do it now? We're short one person, I'm waiting for one person to call in.
Okay, so who do you have in?
Um, we have, um, Dr. Grace Quo.
Doctor, I'm sorry?
Grace Quo, Quo, K-U-O, I'm sorry, K-U-O, yes.
Okay.
Um, Dr. Hejin Lo Shen, I'm sorry, Heisuh Lo Shen.
Are, are these mayor appointments or council appointments?
Council appointments.
Council appointments.
And, um-
What?
We have Heidi Skolnick. And we're waiting for one other person. And then as far as board of, I'm sorry, for rec, um, like I said, we're planning to meet. Um, I don't have a date yet, but I just wanted to thank all of the, um, coaches that were involved in basketball. Um, so I'm gonna, I have the list, so I'm gonna read the list. Um, Councilman Bill Wu, coached third and fourth grade for recreational basketball and the rest are also further recreational basketball coaches. Billy Thier Dorakis, Jim Kokinos, Marco Sangos, Steve Karagosian, Dave Goldberg, Andrew McNeely, Tom Palowitz, Mel Calabro, Marco Sangos, Albert Kim, Mike Kochnower, Noah Solovey, Raffi Jaffrey, Joe Romana, Anthony Senitor, Joanne Benedict. And this is for boys travel basketball, Andrew McNeely, Albert Kim, Tricia Fontecchio, Joe Romana, Miles Campbell, Joanne Benedict, um, George Lee, Marco Sangos, Bill Thier Dorakis, uh, Stanket Shaw. And then for the girls, recreational basketball, um, sorry, my list won't work. It's been, I can't open up my screen all of a sudden, my phone froze, but I wanna just thank, hold on, I'll try one last time, for girls rec. I wanna thank all the dads for-
I know.
I'll take a picture. Okay, hold on. Good idea. Okay, sorry. Girls recreational basketball, Jim Kokinos, Marco Sangos, Steve Karagosian, George Soroka, Stephanie Soroka, Mel Calabro, and Stephen Karagosian. So I wanna thank all the dads, um, for, and moms, for helping out for, um, basketball rec and travel and, um, I hope to see all the parents help out again for the upcoming softball, baseball, soccer. Thank you.
So, uh, you mentioned the board of health nominees and if the council wants, we could approve them right now.
Okay.
Can I do that? All right, uh, can, can you just make the motion with those hands again, please?
Okay, I'll, I make the motion, all right, I make a motion to, um, appoint, uh, Dr. Heisuh Lo Shen, Dr. Grace Quo, and Heidi Skolnick.
Second?
So moved.
Is that long?
Oh, I'm sorry, to appoint to the board of health, sorry.
Thank you.
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Councilman Aversa, do you have a report for anything?
Um, well, the fire department, we may include the boot drives, so that's kind of actively fun rated, and police department, um, the lay returning members, the, um, PEA starts a contract negotiation, and that's just, uh, first of these.
Okay, please try to keep me included in the discussions, 'cause I just found out about it today, thanks. Uh, councilwoman out? Okay, thank you. All right, so the, the next thing we do is we need a motion to advertise for two positions, one zoning and construction official and the second is tax assessor.
One second.
Is that all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the clerk will advertise as we discussed in closed session.
Northern Valley Greenway?
Yes, so, uh, Northern Valley Greenway was, uh, the topic that, uh, Chairperson of Parino brought up last meeting and mentioned it again tonight. And I, I think the, um, the group of towns around that are looking for us to have a, um, a resolution, supporting it, yeah.
So what I found out was that, um, Northern Valley Greenway Group, they plan to preserve and convert over seven miles of unused dilapidated train tracks running through Tenify, Cresskill, Demeris, Closter, Nowood, and Norville and turn it into a multi-use recreational pathway for biking, running, walking, and lots more. It will provide a safe family oriented environment for recreation, exercise, environmental conservation, and educational opportunities. They are both an interlocal municipal team of the six towns along with the right-of-way of a rotarian service project of local rotary clubs. Mayor, I could speak to them about obtaining a resolution.
Okay, so for the next meeting, will we have a resolution? Okay. Is everybody pretty much on board with that, just by consensus? Yeah?
Can you open up the public?
No, how about we do this, we'll get the resolution, you'll see it, and then, um, it's a long meeting, so we'll, we could talk about it next time, how's that?
Can I, um, Mayor?
Yes.
Is it, um, can I make a motion to, um, support, um, Karen Corpor's, uh, uh, recommendation of ending anti-Semitism? Make a motion to, uh, yeah.
Okay, so, um, you want to write one out or you just wanna do it generally?
Uh, did you just tell me if I, uh, can I?
I'm happy to do a proclamation as well, but if you wanna do a council vote, which is, you know, something that I think you should do.
So I make a motion, somebody run a second?
Well, what are you motioning?
She, she proposed that we end, um, with the announcement, anti-Semitism in Englewood Cliffs.
We could, um, why don't we do that and we'll follow it up with a more formal one? Yeah.
That's fine, I think you should probably all briefly do it by resolution.
Right, so we need a next meeting.
So if you wanna do it now, just, does she see it?
And we could ratify it at the next meeting.
Yeah.
We need a second?
So why don't we, uh, phrase it as a, all right, so be it resolved that the borough council and mayor, the mayor and borough council of Englewood Cliffs hereby condemn anti-Semitism, uh, in, in all forms.
And we'll follow up with a resolution.
Yeah, we'll, we'll follow it up with a resolution, but that's pretty much what we should do.
Yep. Um, councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh.
And I-
No, thanks, you did it.
There's just one more thing, uh, please, if you have any spare change, singles, tens, twenties, hundreds, make the North Tiff School, make the North Tiff School students very happy